All right, 5 o'clock. Let's get rolling with the PRL Committee. Our first order of business will be to approve the August 12, 2019 PRL minutes.
It's moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries, thank you. Legislative update. A couple of items, and actually we can, this is courtesy of our friends down in West Dallas, who have a very nice and succinct legislative update that Tricia stumbled upon somehow. And just for the record, I'm not against plagiarizing, so...
You say what it's not plagiarizing.
There you go. West Dallas, thank you very much. No, it doesn't, it's a really nice succinct summary. Just in a few of the highlights from here, and Bob, I was gonna get this, and he's not here. Good thing I didn't get it over to him earlier. What's that?
He's not here.
No, he's not here, but anyways. So, one of the items that is going on right now in the state is a transportation contract bill. And I don't know if anyone here understands the mechanics of it, I just, I thought it was...
Came in at the right time.
Perfect timing. Perfect timing, Bob.
Yeah.
So, so there's a piece of legislation floating around relating to the contracts with parents to transport students to private and sometimes public schools. The bill requires the contract must compensate the parent or guardian a total amount for all pupils residing in the household who attend the same school, rather than a per pupil amount. If you don't, nobody, to me, it was just, it was interesting, because in the West Dallas case, they thought that the savings to their district could be between 10 and 50,000 a year. I'd never heard of such a thing personally.
What it is, is if you live in an area that would be really expensive to have a bus go to, like you're the only family in that area, and you can say you'll take your kids and you get compensated for it, and instead of just paying you the route fee, if you have one kid, you get one, if you had five, you multiply it by five. And they're saying, if you're making the trip anyway, you should just get it for one.
Oh, okay.
That's the way I understand it.
That, first of all, yes, that's the way the law works. And number two, I don't think we have any families that we charge two for, we charge them per family like the law suggests we could do in...
So already there?
We're there already, I think, I can't say that for sure. I know we don't have a family of five where they get five times what one would get. I know we don't have that.
Okay.
I don't think it would help us as much as Oak Creek, is that the...
This one was West Dallas.
West Dallas?
Yeah.
I think it's almost not a factor.
Okay.
And in almost every case, it's cheaper than busing a family, because that's why we choose the parent option, because like you said, it's an expensive, remote location, maybe even offer a parent contract.
It was interesting, I suddenly thought of like a business opportunity, Uber for schools, right?
There you go. We've talked about that.
Food for thought. All right, thank you, Jean and Bob. The next item is a potential change to the general aid payment schedule. That would essentially equalize out or make the payments consistent. So it would be 25% in September, December, March, and June. And the proposed plan would phase that in between now and 2023, '24 school year. Currently, it's 15% in December, 25, 15% in September, 25 in December and March, remaining 35% in June. Obviously, would help too, the districts would have to do the short-term borrowing. I don't know that that has impacted us.
It doesn't right now, because we don't short-term borrow, you hit the nail on the head. With our North Central Wisconsin Wasbowl group, we've been lobbying for that, and I think this is the group that's actually causing it to get this far. We have plenty of school districts in North Central Wisconsin that do short-term borrow, incur interest costs, meet payroll and things like that early in the school year. It's not as much of a factor for us. Our situation could change. I don't know if Noel has anything to add to that.
It used to be, we used to short-term borrow.
If that, if that were to pass, would, would we then not need to carry as high of a fund balance as we currently carry?
It would eliminate one argument, or at least weaken one argument for why you have a strong fund balance. You still have plenty of others, strong fund balance for bond rating, in case emergencies, make decisions, kind of turn up, allows you to turn a single budget into almost a biennial budget, state would do, by taking from one and giving to the other or vice versa. But it does certainly take away one argument, because one argument has always been, strong fund balance allows us to avoid short-term borrowing. Still might have to short-term borrow, it's not gonna eliminate that need statewide, but getting more money earlier in that cycle, especially the districts that are close.
Okay. All right, so something to watch going forward. And the final one here that could potentially impact us is the way that the 4K pupils are counted today versus what the proposal is. Under this particular bill, it would allow 4K programs that require full day attendance by students five days a week, to be able to count these pupils as a whole, 1.OFTE for state aid revenue limit purposes. Today, it ranges from .5 to .6, depending on the hours. And I was going to, actually, I was gonna try to find out the West Dallas enrollment, but for them, it could, and it was interesting, because their note on here was that they are also in a declining enrollment exemption. And it says the additional revenue wouldn't be realized to its full extent until the enrollment stabilizes. However, if this bill were to pass right now, it would create about 60,000 additional revenue for their district. If we did not have the declining enrollment exemption, it would equate to around 600,000 for them. So I, if I recall right, we're in that same scenario today.
We are, and the declining enrollment, if we just consider that separate from allowing to count a 4K student as a one, if we ignore the 4K and we just talk about declining enrollment, the exemption is designed for when you're going down in enrollment, you get made whole by a declining enrollment exemption. So when you're declining, any kind of enrollment gains are almost ignored, because you get made whole with the exemption. So the 4K legislative change would essentially add to your enrollment, but if it weren't enough to overcome the declining enrollment, you're already made whole by the declining enrollment exemption, so any additional students, including the ones that you get through legislation, wouldn't make a difference. Now, what that fails to recognize is in that second year, last year's number of kids do matter, because it's always a three-year rolling average. So in the middle of the year that you're in, for example, we're gonna do third Friday count, next Friday, I believe. That third Friday count for us doesn't matter as much as you think it might in the year we're in the middle of, because we're already in declining enrollment, and if we get more or we get less, we're gonna get made whole by that declining enrollment exemption. So in the year you're in the midst of, it really doesn't matter when you're going down. But when it does matter is next year, this year's will matter, because it's a three-year rolling average. So it's complicated, especially without having a chalkboard up here and pictures, because people are visual learners. The 4K component is just part of that. Right now, there's no financial incentive to go full day of 4K, because the most you can get out of a four-days student is a half or a .6. It would create an additional financial incentive. We have other incentives to have 4K students, full days, right? Makes for better kindergartners, first graders and all that stuff. But there's no financial incentive to go beyond half-days right now. That would create a financial incentive that would allow you to justify all the other reasons you also want full-day 4K. Long answer to a pretty short question, but it'd be...
No, that's helpful. That's helpful, thank you. All right, and then the final, there was no federal legislation that made the radar screen, but there is one other, and not just one bill, but there's a series of potential pieces of legislation that I know everyone is sensitive to regarding the unfunded mandates that come from the state. And there's a handful of them floating around right now that I just wanted to call attention to. There's, you know, various levels of detail in here for those that may be interested. But the first one would be requiring child sexual abuse prevention education. The second would be requiring provision of feminine hygiene products in school buildings. The third was requiring teen dating violence prevention education. The fourth, requiring cursive writing instruction in elementary grades. That one stuck out to me. Why don't we routinely teach cursive in?
We do.
We do, but I don't think everybody does.
Not very many schools still do. You'd be surprised.
Really?
Yes. Sixth graders can't sign their name in cursive.
And they can't read any cursive either.
Well, that's unfortunate.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, they do it in place, they use keyboarding in place, not understanding how much cursive is actually.
Good for their motor skills.
Motor skills, yeah.
Well, I would blame that, or my oldest child's poor penmanship on that.
Can I just follow up with that with Andrea? What grade do they learn in our district?
Ah, yes, we explicitly teach it in third grade, and then it's applied in fourth and fifth with the expectation that the teachers are continuing to, not explicitly teach it, but if a child needs some revision or rework, they would be doing that. But third grade is when we do that.
Well, it'd be great for a G2M class, too, just to kind of work those skills a little more.
And if I'm not mistaken, at EEA, last year or the year before, they started writing things in cursive on their assignment boards or their morning greetings, because they found out that a large percentage of their students somehow missed cursive writing and had no idea how to read it. And so they were doing that to help them get into that groove of being able to read it and also to practice it. So I hope they're still doing that, because it was a big need.
This one, this particular bill is specifying that each elementary school curriculum must include the objective that pupils be able to write legibly in cursive by the end of fifth grade. So, I didn't fall into that. I found that one interesting.
Assess that.
Pardon?
Let's assess that.
Yeah. And the final one was requiring schools to test for and remediate lead contamination in drinking water, which again struck me as a little bit odd that that would have to be...
Sounds like more public health should be...
Mandated, and there is, there's a lot of commentary here about the other actions that are going on, other state programs where that is going to be potentially addressed. So they're thinking that that one, they're gonna hold off on that for a while. But certainly some that may impact us at some point in time, to the extent, you know, financially, we don't know what they are, but things to be aware of. Comments, thoughts, questions, anything else people have...
I know WASB sent out a notice on those unfunded mandates, too, where they basically said, we don't necessarily take a position for or against any of the actual mandates themselves, we just in general have a position against unfunded mandates. If you're gonna require something additional, provide the funding to pay for it.
Yes, unfortunately, I think what's happening on funded mandates got a lot of attention about 10 years ago. And my belief is that we accept it more easily, because we've gotten so many of them, that we don't make as strong of an argument against or a debate against. You get beat up a lot of different ways, and here comes another unfunded mandate. And our fault, we accept them in certain times. I think 10 years ago, we got a lot of attention, because it was on heels of schools being funded a lot more adequately. And I think maybe as lobbying groups, we accept unfunded mandates too easily now. We're busy doing a lot of other things that keep us from fighting for the funding that goes along with the mandate, and many of them are small. And you just get death by a dozen paper cuts, right?
You know what I found interesting in here, that there wasn't any dialogue, at least that I saw, maybe you've been part of this before, but sometimes one way to deal with, because the concept of an unfunded mandate isn't unique just to, you know, a public budget per se, even in the private sector. Sometimes you say, well, we're not going to impose this unless you alleviate something else to offset whatever that was. So it's not necessarily more funding, but it just kind of, you know, it would equalize the budget.
We bring that exact argument up often. Every year in this room, we get our North Central lawmakers together, they, they're good at asking the question, what can we get rid of? What can we get rid of? And we all look at each other like, well, nothing. All this stuff is important, right? So it's back to, give us money for the stuff you're asking us to do. But we occasionally come up with some really good ideas. One of them, a couple of years ago, was all of the notices that must be placed in the newspaper. We spend a lot of money on all these notices that go in the newspaper. Do we need these notices to be in the newspaper? Do people read newspapers? So lawmakers, in almost bipartisan support, said, good point, we'll take that forward. Well, the media has a way of getting their word out, right? And they're really good at it. And it didn't really survive, because media is able to lobby in ways we can't. So, we come up with as many of those, that's a great point you make. A couple of things, we wouldn't have to do this, we wouldn't have to do this. We could spend money on testing for lead in our schools, which by the way, our rural schools, we test all of them. And our city schools, we do trust that the city tests the lead. And we don't buy fixtures that have lead-lined vessels in them. And we, we've been doing that for years. In fact, Larry spends a lot of time looking at our old buildings in particular, and see if there are any drinking fountains or boilers or any of that nature. I guess not boilers, because that wouldn't interact with the drinking water, but we're talking about that one. That one, of the ones I've heard tonight, probably has a greater likelihood of happening, from what I'm hearing. Especially in light of what's happening in Michigan right nearby.
And you find at the delegate assembly, a lot, there's a lot of self-defeating arguments when you come to resolutions. They'll say, this is a great resolution, but they're just gonna take money from somewhere else. And it's like, that's why I think when you write resolutions, you have to include the need for new money for this, and, and not fall into that, oh, they're just gonna take money away from something else, so we're just not gonna look at this good idea.
All right, nothing else on that, move on to public and student comment.
No one.
No one has signed up for that, thanks, Jean. Item five, proposed 2020 WASB resolution. So we have, I think this is the revised one, Jean, correct?
I don't see it on my...
The proposed staff disability?
I see something else about the handbook.
Yeah, oh, I'm getting that.
Is this the same one as last time?
I think it is. There weren't, I don't see any changes having been made to it, and you...
No, we weren't gonna pursue that one, I thought.
That's what I had thought, too.
The only one I thought we were gonna pursue yet this year was the hiring of... Substitutes. Substitutes.
I don't see that one in here.
That's on the regular agenda, I believe.
Oh, okay.
So that one is, I thought you were gonna talk to individuals at Wasbowl about this, but...
I, I think it's just too tight and...
Okay.
I don't think, I'm letting it out. I think it's just best to do it next year.
All right. Then moving on to item six, Neola policies for review, specifically the 2000 series.
2000 series, that was up there, Cassie?
They are.
All right.
Second one over, come on.
Second one, again. So, continuing our work on policies, these are, all have to do with educational programming. And so the ed team, actually, a lot of people had, just touched almost really every facet of our, our districts. A lot of people had a lot of input on these. I'll go through these a little bit more than we, than we did the last, the 1000s. There aren't a lot of things that I thought you needed special note on, so that's, and I'll just kind of swing through them, and then obviously if the board has, you know, questions, we can certainly take those. So, we're gonna opt to reject that. Instead of a statement of philosophy, we did have that, we also add the shared key interests. We thought that was appropriate, that's still a living, breathing document that's reflective of a lot of work. There they are. And then we were proposing to eliminate the Neola language. Didn't see a need for the 2120. Let me check my notes here. 2260 is the next one I had a note on. Let's see. Yeah, we're going to reject educational goals and outcomes, or outcomes and, goals and expectations, but a little later, we do the program review, we thought there was some value there. Again, here, you know, some, some specific information related to our own kindergarten assessments.
On those, Keith, when I see a different shade red, are those just notes that are just for reference and they're gonna be taken out? Is that what that means?
Yes, so if there's, yeah, it's, it's interesting. Once we add language in this drafting format, we aren't able to really remove it. So you're getting actually kind of an insight into some conversations that are taking place between us in writing. So for instance, this obviously is, we're recommending we take that out. And then some of, yeah, so here you see a little bit of conversation. And so the language, I think, really, let me step back and read this, shall be administered annually to each, yeah, so this will be taken out. Probably should have struck through that, but...
No, it's, I mean, it's a different color, I just wanted to make sure that's what that, that was, makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll see a number of notes, like I said, this was very involved, a lot of time was spent on these. And a lot of eyes that are on these, so, curriculum development. There we go. You can see the options that were selected, I think we selected everything on this. Let's keep going unless somebody has a question. I think similar with the courses of study. Selected something out here. Oh, quick note, I was, we had opted to reject this, and then I started thinking about some of these days that I didn't know anything about. And I looked up Mildred Fish Harnack Day. Ironic, yeah, UW, yeah, Madison grad, she...
Beheaded.
She fought, what's that?
Beheaded.
Yeah.
She was or did?
She, she worked against the Nazis. UW Madison executed that.
The only woman, American woman, executed by the Nazis.
There you go, thank you, Dr. Lee. Anything else we should know about?
Casimir Polaski, important college national hero.
So there, you know, after we struck, it's like, no, maybe there is some, doesn't mean we can't incorporate this.
I was wondering about this whole thing. It says according to Wisconsin school laws, does this mean these are no longer, school law no longer requires any of this?
No, it does.
It does.
It does. We don't have to have a policy on it.
Okay.
Yes. I must have sticky fingers. Yeah, course guides, reject. Let's see. 2260, this one, I had a note. Oh, just a reminder that in these non-discrimination policies, you'll see that there was an option that the board, if, if someone wanted to appeal, they could appeal to the board. And we did select that option, I think we mentioned it the last time we, we had a non-discrimined policy. I think that's right, under, right, under complaint procedure. See it, right? Here. So the decision of the district administrator shall be final, we struck through that, will be reviewed by the board upon request. Again, that's consistent with the board. I believe that's my same note in 2260.01.
What policy are you on now?
2260.01.
Right.
So do we, did we pass by 2240?
We did. You had a question?
I did.
All right.
The controversial issues piece. We went from approved by the department head to the principal. And what I recall was, as the Human Growth and Development Committee was looking at things, one of the things that they found was that there was some inconsistency between what was happening at East High School and what was happening represented at West High School. Would seem to me that if it's, the principal is making the approval, that it, it may not lend to consistency between the, between the various schools. So I wondered why we struck department head.
Well, of course, department head would be even more localized. Yeah.
Should it be broader, or should it be broader than that?
It certainly could. When I, when I was reading through this particular policy, I noted a lot of statutory language, so I don't know if that comes from the statute, because typically, you know, this would be district administrator that could be able to be delegated, and I see that's not an option. So I don't know if...
I could weigh, I'll weigh in on that. As a former building principal, in a situation like this, I mean, the department head probably already knows what's going to be taught or discussed in that. I think it's important that the principal gives, has that ability and knows about it in case, you know, you have that second set of eyes having that discussion, like, you know, let's take a look at this, let's make sure that this is, you know, what we want to, the road we want to go down before. Maybe we do go down that road. Just, you have that extra person and the person above the department head to make that decision, so that we're not putting this, maybe, you know, putting the kids at risk or the teacher at risk or whatever.
Right, creates a bad start for the teacher, so they got a little more security.
I don't have a problem with that at all, the principal, but in most districts where there's a single high school, that's not a problem. But for consistency purposes, when you have multiple high schools, now you could have inconsistencies, where there should be some neutrality there, as you can talk about. Because it might be a little bit different on the west side versus the east side or vice versa. We don't know.
Right, so am I hearing you maybe propose that this should be, that the approval should be with the director's secondary ed?
I would, I would think that would be the next step up. Before it gets to you, I think it would go to the director.
This seems more like a, like, Human Growth and Development seems like a specific curriculum that you would want somebody at the district level to be making sure that it's same at both schools. This seems to be more like just the kind of, I don't wanna say day-to-day, but not, not a whole, we're gonna do a whole class on this subject, more like, as part of our literature, we're gonna do, you know, we're gonna hit this topic, and they might not be doing it at the other school. That doesn't mean they can't do it at one of the schools, just because a different teacher is using the exact same thing at a different school.
I think there was a bigger problem with the Human Growth and Development.
If what you're talking about is that covered in another policy, where specific things that are big things for the district to be aware of, is that being dealt with? If that is the case, fine, and this is just classroom. Then the principal should be in charge of that.
Right, see, and I tend to, oh, go ahead. I was just gonna say, I tend to see this as more as a classroom, like you were saying, Lance, that it's a very specific, discussion that might be occurring that isn't necessarily embedded into the curriculum, but this teacher maybe has a passion about it, wants to bring it in their classroom for that day, that they may want to come to the principal and have that discussion. Because if it was, if it was based in the curriculum, then that would already, I think, had been discussed and decisions would have been made at, at this level, you know, it would have, it came that way already.
And I think the issue with the Human Growth and Development was district-wide. It was just, nobody was looking in on that and making sure it was being run in any way. It was, one building was following it by the letter of the law, and the other building was not doing it at all. And I think with the new policy, when it gets finished and it gets applied, I think that will change.
I was concerned when I heard that, that meeting, that it... I was concerned when I heard that, that meeting, that, because they were quite inconsistent. And the other thing that I'm concerned about with this one is, is there needs to be, I think there needs to be some oversight. A couple of years ago, one of the schools, elementary schools presented some material that I thought was, was extremely inappropriate for a grade school level on some sexuality material. And, and it just was not appropriate. So if the principal is the only one that's making that decision and it isn't clear somewhere further up, I have some real concerns about that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't have a problem with it being higher up if you don't think it was a burden. I'm just, I'm just trying to conceptualize, is this something that kind of happens on a weekly basis? Or is this not that often? And it wouldn't really be that big a deal to have it go to district level?
Well, again, Human Growth and Development is a kind of field that's covered separately. You know, with this, I don't imagine that in most cases, parents would ever know ahead of time that a controversial issue is coming up. If it's just part of the normal instruction on a very even unplanned basis, the discussion's already happened, four parent knows it's happened. So do we even, I suppose we have this policy or are introducing it because we're required to have it. Is that the case?
No.
Because normally it just would probably not come up.
Right. No, and this one, we're not required to have the policy. But it, you know, as, again, thinking back to the reasons we choose or choose not to have policies, we thought this was one, good, good guidance for, for administration and staff from the board. It's also a good communication tool to parents about, you know, about issues that, you know, can bubble up if we, if we don't have some direction. And so that's why I.
So the current practice would be the principals already decide this anyway, correct?
I believe so. I guess I, it, you know, the, the most recent one that came to my attention, of course, was Human Growth and Development, which had a separate policy and a whole another set of criteria. So I don't know if anybody could speak to.
Well, and the reason I'm asking is because Human Growth and Development, that is just a separate thing. My concern would be micromanaging our principals. I think that as long as they know, hey, if this is something you're not sure about, can always reach out to Andrea or reach out to whoever else might be appropriate and ask, as opposed to put it in policy. Now all of a sudden, a lot of things are going to the administration.
And then they miss out on a teachable moment.
So I'm fine with this, like it is.
If by virtue of the fact that it's potentially controversial, then I think that someone in administration at a higher level needs to know at least that it's being informed that it's likely to be happening. Because if, why do we want to create possible issues when we can, when we can avoid them?
Well, maybe the word approved is the, maybe that should be more to the idea of being informed. You know, as a principal, if there was something I would want to know, I don't necessarily have to approve it, but I would want to know just in case I'm going to get a phone call.
You bet.
And I'm ready for it. It doesn't necessarily have to say that you can or you can't, but I would want to know about it.
Well, I think that's really difficult. I'm going to give you an example. As a first grade teacher, I read Christopher Columbus sailed the ocean blue in fourteen ninety-two for I don't know how many years. And we all know how he was a great hero. And then I went to a book workshop and there was a book called The Encounter by Jane Yolen. And she portrays Christopher Columbus in a different light, that maybe he wasn't such a hero. Yes, he was looking for gold. He took people back. Some of them didn't want to go. They brought a lot of disease. A lot of the villages lost their identity. And it's a very simple children's story, but it has a very different message. Well, I make those decisions every week when I'm putting together my lesson plans. And I'm not running to the principal and saying, is it okay if I read this book? Now, yes, I know that some kids are going to go home and say, hey, Mrs. Miles read a different book. And Christopher Columbus, maybe he wasn't such a great hero. Well, I'm going to be able to defend that with the principal. But that's just an example of good teaching. I'm bringing in different examples. And I don't think we want to micromanage our teachers about, hey, the simplest thing can turn into a controversy. I mean, you can say, you know, you can read a book and it can be about somebody who lost their parent. And a parent is very upset because they thinks it's a real emotional issue. And you shouldn't have touched that. So I just don't want to go down that road. I just don't.
What this policy allows is an opt-out for a parent who finds out early enough to make an argument and opt out and have somebody approve that argument. So it's a way of avoiding trouble with that parent. And the kid just isn't part of that lesson. But normally, it would be too late and it would never come up.
Exactly.
And the policy has nothing to do with what already happened in the classroom.
Right. So I mean, you know, I don't want teachers to think that, oh, this could be a controversy, got to run to the principal and say, hey, can I read this book?
No, we wouldn't want that.
No.
No. And then they do try to give, give some, you know, definition of controversy, right? Opposing points of view, responsible, and then likely to arouse both support and opposition in the community. Sometimes you can't see it coming, but they do try to define it.
Well, by definition, this policy says it is something you anticipated could be coming.
Correct.
So informing and having the information so that you can respond, I think, is incredibly I mean, I recognize there are those other things that are, that, you know.
Well, but I mean, that's everyday teaching.
So we have the recommendation from administration on this as it sits here today. Is there any other alternative specific recommendation relative to this?
I don't have a strong preference, just because I still think you're leaving it to the individuals to decide whether they think this is a big controversial issue or not. If they do, they'll go to the principal with it. If they don't, they won't.
I think it's fine.
Just for clarity, Dr. Health, so when we're talking about the definition of controversial topic, and both of these are marked, does that mean there should be an and? Or is this an or situation? So right at the start, for purposes of this policy, a controversial issue is a topic.
On which opposing points of view have been promulgated by responsible opinion, that would be an and.
Okay. And I, I think that clarity should be there if it is, if we do keep it in. And then similarly for just below that, we have A, B, and C. Is that also something that should be an and after B?
Related to the instructional goals of the course of study and level of maturity of students, and does not tend to indoctrinate or persuade to a particular view, and encourages open mind. I'm assuming those are ands should be, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
So if we could, if we keep that in, if we could just include that for clarity.
So are we keeping it principal or are we doing director secondary?
I'm fine with principal.
I'm fine with principal.
Me too.
I'm fine with principal.
Thank you.
Just a note, as long as you brought this, I probably should have noted this. In the discussion of any controversial issue in the classroom or in the course of professional duties, a teacher may not express a personal opinion. As opposed to, may express a personal opinion but shall identify it as such and must not express such an opinion as the purpose of persuading the students. I think in, in my experience and my opinion, if you go here anytime, this, this is just my opinion. I, I think this is, if we, again, if we want students to go, come to their own conclusions, I think, you know, less direction is healthy.
What if we have a high school student or curious high school students that are probing their teacher? What is his or her opinion of the matter?
Yeah. You know, I, I think what I always encouraged was for that student to draw their own conclusions based on the facts that they have available to them.
Right. Because you don't want to substitute the authority of the individual for the authority of the argument.
Correct.
You also don't want to put yourself in a position as the teacher where you've taken the side of maybe only part of your classroom. And now you're speaking against what the other half of the class thinks. So I think it makes sense.
I think this one would be interesting because I, I receive feedback, frankly, on a regular basis where personal opinions are expressed.
Yeah.
In the classroom. Some are, to me, irrelevant, not a big deal. But others, I can see where it would incite some, some issues with parents. So it'd be interesting to see how this one plays out.
You think it's good the way it is?
I was just asking because I was anticipating more of like a AP IB class where they have some.
A lot of thinking or not.
Yeah.
Very persuasive speech.
Twenty-two sixty point oh two.
Well, that went too far, didn't it? Oh, no, I did. Sorry, I'm learning to drive stick shift right in front of you. I'm popping the clutch.
Are we at twenty-two sixty now?
Oh, point oh two. Yeah.
Can we go back? I have one concern about, about the whole nondiscrimination thing. And it happens, it shows up a number of different times.
Yes.
It seems to me that the federal laws is, does clearly identify issues. There are some of them though that are, that are certainly been being tested and in question now. And I'm not sure where the term nondiscrimination comes in. For example, the parenthesis material after sex, including transgender status, change of sex or gender identity, it shows up a number of times in a number of different policies. The concern I have is, for example, there's, there are legal action right now in, in some states, Connecticut being one of them, where transgender males are competing in athletics against, against females. And there, and certainly that there's a potential at some point in time for us to find a situation where this, this particular parenthesis doesn't necessarily fit with, where with the legal and psychological and physiological data that's out and is a controversial area. And it's not protected necessarily. So why include it?
Because currently, it is protected. And if the law were to change, that's, frankly, that's one of the reasons we hired Neola, is to keep us on top of those kinds of changes. So if it were to change, then they would.
Yeah, in the, yeah, in the Seventh Circuit, as of right now, that's the law, which is us. Although, although for athletics, WIA has certain standards that, that apply.
And a transgender male would compete against male and a transgender female would compete against female.
The correct use of terms.
But W, I mean, the WIA has their own set of standards in terms of.
Requirements length of.
Right. So as the, if the law changes, then we change the policy. As Neola will, will inform us.
Could that one?
Obviously, the, the parent was added. And it's not, we don't describe any other kinds of discrimination. So why would we do it specifically with this one? Why not leave it out and just say sex, comma, and then go on from there?
Because years, several years ago, the question was asked if sex covered these other things. And an attorney was asked in it. And they said, yes, it does. But they included it to, to make it clear to everybody. So it wasn't a question that kept coming up.
And again, you know, the nondiscrimination policies are some that I always recommend we don't change the language. Because, you know, again, attorneys have written this to be specific, to protect the district. And I'd recommend we keep it, but.
I don't think it matters a whole lot either way because if you don't have that section in parentheses, sex is defined to include transgender status in the Seventh Circuit, which we're in. So either way, it's.
Well, you keep it in there because not everybody knows that information. And so, and there's absolutely no reason to want to discriminate against students on the basis of this anyway.
And we should strive for clarity. So that's what the parenthetical information provides.
Yeah, I'm saying, taking it out won't actually change anything for our district anyway.
Except it would confuse people.
Because we, we still have to follow it because that's the law.
And it's the right thing to do. Moving on.
Okay.
Next item.
Oh, twenty-two oh six, again, English language proficiency. Whoop, that was bad. Again, I think, you know, changes, twenty-two sixty point, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I was just a couple of changes that represent, you know, our current practice. Moving down to.
Keith, sorry, I.
Oh, yeah.
There's, there was something back in twenty-two sixty, and this is on, if you're going the quick route, is page twenty-two. On the, the district shall attempt annually to identify children with disabilities who do not receive a public education. How, how do we do that? How do we find?
Census.
Does census information give us identities?
It's called a census. Do you, you speak to that a little bit or?
It says it will do that.
Did I assign twenty-two sixty oh one?
Twenty-two sixty, I think it's just twenty, let me go back up a little bit. No, just straight twenty-two sixty. And it's down here in the twenty-second page of the.
Aren't we generally, isn't it generally when we're alerted by someone else, a different , you know, private school or whatever it might be?
Yeah, the paragraph begins, the district administrator shall attempt annually to identify children with disabilities aged three through twenty-one who reside in the district but do not receive a public education.
I think, isn't that parent referral?
Well, I mean, no, it says, we shall attempt to identify.
We do child find with young children, you know, and send out notices and work with different agencies.
Okay. And so that covers our responsibility here. Okay.
That's the only, yeah, it wasn't the census of the child. Thank you. Yeah. That's the only process I'm aware of.
All right.
Still on that one, Keith. Why just the one complaint coordinator or compliance officer? I think it's just a suggestion that districts may want to consider both a male and a female, both for, well, on the, for having an individual that a gender may feel more comfortable with. But then there's the secondary reason that somebody will always be available in theory. And I see that we have Carla, but nobody else.
Right. So we, we talked about options. And so for instance, right now Carla's out of the district. And so, you know, Tammy would be the next. As far as a male, you know, certainly, you know, I've got experience and training in that. Not everybody else. Maybe Mr. Weber does. We'll check about that. He wasn't here when we were first talking. But because I'm also listed as an appeal, I didn't think I would want to be the first. So that was our thinking at the time. We also recommend in here that, that someone could, could report to anyone they feel comfortable reporting to. So that could be a principal or director, you know, me, if they reported to me, I would probably refer it if they were comfortable. So, yeah, we talked about that a little bit. And I wouldn't, you know, we would certainly add, I think Mrs. Benz would be very good. I know, I understand about the, the gender. Like I say, you know, maybe Mr. Weber wants to volunteer. I'll ask him after the meeting.
I think it is a good recommendation.
Yeah.
I do too.
You'd like to see a male?
Yes.
We can certainly do that.
A little further down, I was wondering, it's in the paragraph that begins, all investigation shall commence as soon as practical upon receipt of the complaint. And then the complaining party shall be notified in writing a receipt of the complaint within forty-five days. Now, the receipt of the complaint, is that something other than us just recognizing that we got the complaint?
Let me find where you're.
Because that, it's in the paragraph.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, it's just before a list of, letters. Because I would think receipt would happen that day or the next day. Notification of receipt or.
Right. We would certainly be faster in this. Again, this is likely statutory requirements. Doesn't mean we wouldn't be faster. Where'd I leave off, Cassie?
Twenty-two sixty point oh two, English language proficiency.
Oh, I'm close. There we go. Okay, yeah. And again, we, I think we already mentioned this one, just made a couple of changes consistent with our practice. Okay, yeah, and again, we, I think we already mentioned this one, just made a couple of changes consistent with our practice. And then, oh, sorry?
I just want to clarify.
Sure.
We had the licensing issue a while ago for ELLA as a requirement, but then did not, didn't we eliminate that as a requirement of hiring or something going forward?
We require for elementary, but we also, I'm going to look over to Andrea, who knows more of the details on this.
And we maintain the requirement for ELLA certification for elementary educators, but what we have done is partnered with UW Ashkosh. So we offer the classes here, we are charged, we also pay for the practice exam, which is part of that process. So we try to eliminate any monetary hardship that used to be asked of our incoming educators.
But it's not a state requirement that they have that license?
Correct.
Okay, I guess that's for another discussion. We wouldn't address that in policy, but.
Right.
I don't think we would.
Good.
Yeah, when we had that presentation that we were given information regarding there was funding and there was, I don't know, there was some sort of title status or some sort of status that we received by having such a high percentage of teachers that were ELL certified.
Okay, all right, we'll take that one offline.
Okay.
Thanks.
At the bottom of the policy under E, it says opportunity for the parents to deny. That's a change from appeal, the exit or reentry decision. So do I understand it correctly that we can make plans for student and the parents can say, no?
That's correct.
Okay, and and that's something we have to allow?
No.
Okay, why would we want the parents to be able to to change the our practices with regard to what a child needs and doesn't need in terms of English Language Proficiency?
Was that part of this recent conversation last year, Randy, or or no?
I don't believe so. Our paperwork has always offered a parent an opportunity to say, no, that I don't have a child to participate in that learning model. I think it goes back to our relationship to parents, and if they have a strong opinion about why they might not want to, we certainly will want to explore that and explain what we could offer to their child, but we still want a positive relationship. And if they feel very strongly that that's not in their child's best interest, I think we would respect that. It's been our practice for as many years as I've been in the district.
Okay, and I would err on the other side.
Okay.
But this is public opinion and politics over what's best for the child. That does, I'd say, you know, we should decide what's best for the child, because we're, you know, experts and the parents aren't. But if you think it's better to save that trouble, you know, I can go along with it.
Well, potentially, I think sometimes if a parent does deny services or support, having an additional conversation, talking through, maybe answering questions if they don't understand the why, maybe then they would reconsider, so.
Does this happen very often, Andrea? Or are you talking like a handful of times in a school year?
Even the district. I think the majority of parents feel that, as Dr. Lee has said, that we are experts in the field of education. We're offering a program an option, because a child maybe needs some additional support in the area of second language learning or whatever it might be, that that they trust us, if not, we explore that with them, so make sure they have the facts.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm just looking at the clock, right? And good conversation, this is what we wanted, right? We want to be feel comfortable with with what's included in the policy. Is this a good place to to break, kind of finish this agenda, so we can start the next meeting on time?
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you, so we'll stick up again with.
We got one more time.
You have a notice again?
I do.
All right.
Two-two six-one.
All right, thanks, everybody.
All right. Thank you, moving on to the last item. Request to change the graduation date and time for WSAW for the 2020 ceremony.
Yeah, I think Mr. Weber's going to speak to it correctly.
So Mr. Stechar and I have been talking. We have a situation this year, which I really would describe as abnormal as far as the number of events that fall on the night of the WSAW graduation. It's one of those years where the calendar is set up, where normally these events could probably be the week after, but calendar rolled in a different way this year. And so we have, as I said, an extraordinary number of events that fall on that evening, more than what would even close to normal. And so he and I and, you know, and Dr. Hilton have had some discussions about what would be the best way to proceed, and we're recommending that in the in the best interest of the kids, so that they have an opportunity to, as many kids as possible, to attend their graduation. That for this year only, we we make that move. And we're suggesting to move it to Friday night at eight o'clock. There is an event or two that evening, but that the kids would be able to get back to graduation in time if we move it to eight o'clock on that Friday. And we looked at some other dates, but we felt that this was the best date to go.
What are the other events that day?
That day?
There's there's only, on that day, there's one event, and it's it's Saturday.
On Friday, right.
So on on Tuesday, when the graduation was, it would have affected anybody that would be in Friday's event as well. It will only reduce anybody who's close. And we may have someone that's going to be running in. But often during our graduation, we have things that come up that we, you know, we can't predict in terms of playoffs and things like that. This year, though, we just had so many. I just, I guess I wasn't comfortable at least talking about it. So that, you know, I don't know that we should have a ton of kids having to choose graduation over supporting their team and being a teammate. And just to give some additional information, if you can picture, this year in 2020, Memorial Day will be the 25th. So that brings the 31st to be on Sunday. So that's kind of what backed everything up, all right? So typically, we have, let's say, Memorial Day is the 31st, and it's on, you know, so then that that week, we have graduations after. And typically, then that week is when the regular season has already ended for everything. We're already on to state track. In fact, a number of years ago, it used to be Wednesday, Thursday, East and West graduations. But we decided, because every year we send some kids to state track, that that was, so we moved to Tuesday. And there's always going to be some conflicts, but there's never been this many. And so I wanted to make sure that that we talked about it at least.
So East is on what day then, Wednesday?
I don't know. Yeah, you, it it goes Tuesday West, Wednesday East, and then the following year, it's Tuesday East and Wednesday West.
And Thursday is.
Wednesday is always the better day, because it's, you know, Wednesday, there's fewer things naturally scheduled on Wednesday. Tuesday, typically, there has been some playoffs for things, but oftentimes, we'll have a bye, because it's oftentimes the first regional, and sometimes, you know, we we don't make it, so there's. But this year, we had two regular season events. We had regional track for boys and girls, and that is, obviously, in the regionals, there's a lot of kids participating, you know, and that gets lessened as they go through the the playoffs. We also had some tennis subsectionals and softball regionals. Some of those things, if we if we kept it, just to to be fair with with you, we could and and often do, make some arrangements to to do that. But we have a lot of arrangements to be making this year. The track one especially is something that we just can't move.
And what was on Thursday, Jeb?
Um, Thursday, we have, we have on Thursday, we have softball regionals, tennis sectionals, soccer at Point, and baseball at home, and lacrosse is a, we don't know yet.
Okay.
So Friday was the least, in that week, was the night with the least activities. And if we moved it to eight, we we increase our chances that much greater that, you know, I mean.
Jeb, where's the sectional track month this year?
It's in Everest, so that's in our favor.
So you're, yeah, they're going to be able to get it back.
Geographically, we can get it back.
Well, the only, I guess the one thing, and I certainly appreciate all the the dynamics, but I know that the the one, it's not a complaint, but an issue that I had heard the last few years is for some of the elderly grandparents and things like that that, of course, want to attend the graduation, starting at eight o'clock on a Friday. Sometimes causes a bit of a of a hardship for them, so I, that's what stands out.
West is is still on the ticket. You can only take so many kids, so I don't even know that many grandparents.
They're in the auditorium.
Oh, okay.
Well, in the last few years, we've been able to pretty much get, we we changed our our, the way we set it up. We get most people in, and we have some that choose to go to the auditorium, and some that maybe don't have tickets, if we have some.
I don't want this to be a census on how many grandparents do or do not attend, that's not the point, but. Are there any other thoughts, considerations?
I was thinking younger siblings.
Well, the most important thing is that the kids be able to attend their own graduation. That comes first and foremost. So I think we should go with the recommendation as the best night to get as many of the graduating kids in there as possible.
And perhaps we could beef up the handicap parking or the sixty and over parking on that end of campus, so it's near the auditorium. I don't know, I always think we don't have enough for these events.
All right. Given that, I will seek a motion to recommend at the board the approval to change 2020 graduation date and time for WSAW to Friday, May 29th at 8:00 P.M.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. With that, a seeking motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.